Chuk 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 chuk. Yes, yes.
Two rats.
Two rats.
Two rats.
Two rats.
Guys have to look at it tomorrow.
I know. Oh. There is, I'm looking to see if they have one more for you. Oh.
It was fun. What you did. It's like a power thing.
This stays here.
Okay. Oh, did you, you said open mic?
Yeah, I did. I was about to do it again.
Chuk 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 chuk. I don't do all that. Chuk chuk chuk. No, we uh, we feel like uh, keep this on or turn it off? Okay. The, the second one off was the problem.
I love you.
First you ask the guy. Yeah. He's in Congress. 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 Thanks. I know. He's got his heart. I like you. I like you. He was not your apple. He was my 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 apple. Sorry. I don't like it. 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 All right. I do it. 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 We should come to you. 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 We should come to you.
Good evening. I apologize for our tardiness. Can you please stand for the pledge? Good evening. Under the provisions of the Public Meetings Law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes the time, date, place, tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and the agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, March 11th, 2019, at Administration Center, 8855 Dunn Road, Hazelwood, Missouri. Copies of the notice and agenda were sent to major radio and television stations, to three newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. Ma'am, please get a recommendation to adopt the agenda as posted. Connie?
Ms. Weaver?
Aye.
Ms. Holford?
Aye.
Ms. Condon?
Aye.
Secretary of Vote, aye.
Ms. Shaboll?
Aye.
Aye.
At this time, we're going to recognize McClure North and McClure Student Athletes as they competed in the inaugural Girls State Wrestling Championship.
Right? We'd like to invite the McClure lady wrestlers and the McClure North wrestlers to the front. Okay, McClure lady wrestlers and McClure North, please come to the front with their coaches, Coach Kombas, Coach Cooper, Coach Lipinski, and their athletic directors, as well as their principals, Principal Gerald and Principal Crowley. Girls wrestling has been growing as a sport, and McClure and McClure North both had girls' wrestling team competing this season. The inaugural Misha Girls State Wrestling Championship was held the first weekend of February, and both McClure and McClure North were represented in Columbia. Alexis Yancy, if you'll step forward. Alexis was the first McClure female wrestler to qualify for the state wrestling championship. McClure North Junior Paige Faulkner, if you'd step forward, please, took fourth place in the 121-pound division. Sophomore Natalie Shaljo took second place in the 130-pound division. And the McClure North ladies' team took fourth place as a team. Congratulations to our groundbreaking lady wrestlers, making history. Making history. Congratulations, ladies. Thank you, coaches, principals.
So at this time, we are going to recognize the Boys State Wrestling Meet competitors.
Yes.
Dr. Hazel?
The annual Misha State Wrestling Tournament features Missouri's top wrestlers vying for the state championship. In boys' wrestling, McClure's Kennard Haynes qualified for his first state tournament, and McClure North sophomore Ibrahim Amir took sixth place in that 170-pound class at the Class Four Misha State Wrestling Championships. Congratulations, and thank you for representing your school and the Ferguson-Floreson School District in Columbia. Congratulations, gentlemen.
McClure also has a Division One wrestler right now who qualified for the national tournament, University of Pitt. He was a Dean on the Dean's List and currently is being named as a winner.
All right, good evening. Tonight, we would like, the Ferguson-Floreson School District is committed to ensuring all students read often. Dr. Davis has issued a two-billion-word challenge, and Wedgewood Elementary is encouraging reading through this Literacy Week. So we have a video to show tonight.
So my journey started as a reader early on. My grandfather used to read the Sunday paper. So seeing that early age was, you know, stressed importance of seeing men read and/or having literature in the home. We always had encyclopedias in the house, but I don't think I really developed a love for reading until I got to college. You know, being an athlete, it wasn't always looking in the positive light to be scholarly or to read. So I kind of didn't like, love reading in high school, middle school, but when I got to college, kind of experienced that really opened my eyes to the power of literacy and how important it was that I wanted to be successful in life, is to really get exposed to books. And that process starts really early in developing those literacy skills. Literacy Week's important to students and families at Wedgewood because it's really highlighting the importance of literacy, highlighting the importance of falling in love with books, favorite authors and genres, and really stressing the importance of why you need to be literate. How can being literate help you through your journey throughout life? So that's why this week is very important.
So we're using this video to kick off our Literacy Week here at Wedgewood. I'm really excited. Every day, we're going to have a different theme or event going on. So Monday is Bring Your Favorite Book to School Day. So you can share that in your class with your classmates, your students, maybe have some time to do a little reading on your own with your favorite book. Tuesday will be Dr. Seuss Day, so we'll be celebrating books and learning that way. Wednesday, we have a special event called Real Men Read. We're inviting men from the community to come into our classrooms and read books to all of our students, and just talk about how reading is important to them and how it has helped them in their lives. And then Thursday, our final event is Camp Read-A-Lot. That will be after school in the evening, and it is open to all Wedgewood students and their families. So Thursday night, we're hoping that everyone shows up. We'll have all kinds of literacy-themed activities. It'll be set up like it's a campsite with tents, and there'll be books, there'll be snacks, there'll be giveaways. So we're hoping to see all of our Wedgewood families there Thursday night.
Thank you. Dr. Warren and Ms. Amanda Amir, would you please come up? We would like to recognize your efforts of celebrating a literacy life, encouraging students to read. So let me share that Wedgewood, the students have currently read 13,225,868 words. District-wide, our district, our students have read 870,347,991 words. So congratulations. Thank you for encouraging literacy throughout your building.
Dr. Hazel, we're going to recognize one of our Griffith educators.
Yes, so I'd like to invite Kathy Lovins and Mr. Sean Joyce, her principal, to the front. Following an interview process, Griffith teacher Kathy Lovins was accepted in the 2019 cohort of the Neighborhood Leadership Fellows Program through University of Missouri Extension and UMSL. This program highlights the St. Louis Promise Zone and community leaders who want to support sustainable transformation for equitable whole communities. Ms. Lovins graduated from the Neighborhood Leadership Academy through the University of Missouri Extension and UMSL on November 13th of 2018, and received a chancellor's certificate for completion of the program, which includes a presentation of a community project that was in the process of implementation in the city of Ferguson. The project is a collaboration with Griffith Elementary and the Ferguson Municipal Library. Griffith hosted a family literacy night, and the Ferguson Library bought books, made donations, and provided literacy programs with expert presenters for families, parents, and the children in the Delwood Ward area of Ferguson on Thursday, January 25th. Ms. Lovins was sponsored by the city of Ferguson to participate in the program as a community member of Jeski Park, Ward Two, and a community leader. Congratulations, Ms. Lovins. Thank you for creating reading opportunities for our students and families.
Dr. Kitson's back up. Just keep switching back and forth, don't you?
All right. Tonight, we would like to recognize the Berkeley Middle Art teacher, Sarah Eastman. She received $500 from KPLR 11 and Weber Chevrolet for her efforts helping students in and out of the classroom. Ms. Eastman was nominated by Berkeley Middle's custodian, that's amazing, Dale Hockenberry. Mr. Hockenberry nominated Ms. Eastman due to her work in and out of the school with students. She is always helping the students the best way that she can, he wrote. She goes above and beyond the call of duty for the students, always. Ms. Eastman and Mr. Hockenberry appeared on the KPLR 11, on KPLR 11, Channel 11, in February, and she received her award. Ms. Eastman is not able, she was not able to attend tonight. So Ms. Carbs, would you come on up and accept this certificate on her behalf? So, great job. Ms. Eastman is actually truly dedicated to her students, so I appreciate all that she does.
Each month, the communication team presents a short video of district highlights and successes. We will now have the FFST, Shared Images of Success.
Students, teachers, and staff all across the Ferguson-Floreson School District are experiencing success. On Thursday, March 8th, eighth-grade students at the STEAM Academy engaged in a PBL project titled "Dun Redun." In their project, students were tasked with surveying and redeveloping a section of Dunn Road that faces the school to beautify, restore, and to make safer for pedestrians. The students presented their projects with representatives from the Missouri Department of Transportation, which included Tom Blair from the regional management team and several other civil engineers and safety managers. Students were also competing to win the final contract to be awarded for their redesign of Dunn Road. The structure team was the winner and received the monetary prize from MODAD. On Saturday, March 9th, the Ferguson-Floreson School District held its first summer camp fair for the entire St. Louis community. More than 1,500 attendees were greeted at the fair entrance with event bags stuffed with the fair program, map, and materials from our sponsors and exhibitors. Everyone had the opportunity to meet and gather information from over 63 summer camps and activities represented. Thank you to all sponsors, exhibitors, volunteers, and Blueprint for STL for making this a great event. Congratulations to Duchaine 5th Grader Geneva Hackle and Halls Ferry 6th Grader Joy Jones. The two are the top finishers in the district's 2019's nominee. Geneva placed first, and Joy placed second. The McClure High School acting classes performed children's theater for the school's early education students. The acting students participated in a three-week residency with author and actor Eddie Avioli from Eddie's Fairy Tale Theater to create a mashup of the Three Pigs. from Eddie's Fairy Tale Theater to create a mashup of the Three Pigs, Goldilocks, and the Three Bears. Four members of the My Brothers Keeper Mentoring Program attended the Young Men's Leadership Conference in Los Angeles, California on February 23rd at Loyola Marymount University. The event was hosted by Wes Hall, founder of the Institute for Student Empowerment for the Los Angeles Unified School District. Fellows had an opportunity to participate in sessions that encourage self-development in various areas of their lives. The fellows had an opportunity to network and collaborate with young men from various parts of the state and individuals outside of the state as well. You can learn more about these stories and other examples of the great learning happening in our district on our website and on social media.
This portion of the meeting is allocated to show a short video from the Missouri School Board Association to provide a report of current activities and events that may be, that may be of interest to the board members and the community.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of March. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at MSBA's recent legislative forum in Jefferson City, where nearly 300 school board members and administrators participated. One of the speakers at the event was the president of the State Board of Education, Charlie Shields, who said the state must place a high priority on early childhood education since the education of a three-year-old is as important as the education of a third grader. He also touched on the issue of charter schools, saying current charter school laws in Missouri are a mismatch of accountability.
Now, I believe that there is a role for charter schools in the state of Missouri, but we need to have workable laws and better understand what it takes to make charter schools successful. And I think that discussion has to take place before any discussion about expansion of charter schools occurs in this state.
Shields also said closing poorly performing charter schools has proven to be difficult under current laws. There are currently several bills moving in the General Assembly that would expand charter schools beyond St. Louis and Kansas City where they currently exist. MSBA believes charter schools should be authorized by local boards of education and held to the same accountability standards as traditional public schools. Shields also urged school board members and administrators to tell legislators about the great things going on in Missouri's public schools.
You hear this in the Capitol from all these sources that say, "Public education is failing our state." But the one thing that is always common, that people say that public education is failing our state, is they usually have an economic interest in the solution. Okay? So that's why the cry is publication, education is failing, because you have to create a crisis, you have to say something is failing before you can have a solution, and most people creating the solution have an economic interest in that solution. So your job is to spread the good word about public education.
Another speaker at the legislative forum, Dr. Tim Hodges of the Gallup Organization, said, "Research shows creating a positive school culture and climate will not only help keep teachers from leaving the profession, but also will result in better student performance." He said, "Better salaries and benefits are needed to attract people to teaching, but creating a positive school climate where teachers are engaged can keep teachers in the classroom."
Less turnover, teacher shortage problem, let's create an environment that causes people to want to stay rather than one that causes them to consider when they're going to leave. And how about engagement of our students, of our parents? Another big difference. If teachers are engaged, that rubs off on everybody in the school community and the broader community as well.
Hodges added that, "Research is clear that a positive school climate contributes to academic achievement and decreases the negative influence of poor socioeconomic background characteristics and other risk factors related to academic achievement." Following presentations on legislative issues, board members and administrators attending the legislative forum had the opportunity to visit with legislators from their home areas at the Capitol. Once again this year, a feature of the legislative forum was the student showcase. Students from more than a dozen school districts set up displays in the Capitol Rotunda to show off some of the innovative programs and projects in Missouri's public schools. The showcase included students from the Knobnoster School District, who designed a plastic switch cover now being used in the B2 bombers based at Whitman Air Force Base to prevent possible in-flight emergencies, as well as students from the Riverview Gardens School District, who helped develop and open a school-based health clinic for students. We thank all the students who participated in this year's student showcase. MSBA will be hosting another student showcase during this fall's annual conference. MSBA's spring regional meetings are coming up in April and May. A meeting is held in each of MSBA's 17 regions in the state. It's a great opportunity to network with your colleagues from your area of the state and to share ideas. Topics for this year's spring regional meetings will vary by region. You can find out more about your regional meeting and register for the meeting by visiting the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
This portion of the meeting is allocated for the board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to the board members and the community. We will now have Mr. Ebert.
Thank you, and, excuse me. Thank you all for coming tonight. I really just want to say that I've told this story before, but it's worth saying. When I was a young dad and there were, me and my best friend decided, you know, we're going to do something to help kids. Well, he went into scouting. And I, as you can tell where I ended up, but he sees kids all the time. He's even doing Eagle Scouts now. He's taking these kids all the way up. And my point to that is, we, you know, on the board, don't always, shall we say, get to see, you know, kids day-to-day, work with them, things like that, like he, he had the opportunity to do. And I was just so excited that at my seat or desk were all these letters from kids, you know, at Vote Elementary. You know? It just, I take them home, I read them all, and a little poster here. So thank Dr. Leslie Washington and everybody at Vote, because I can't stress enough how much that means. Sometimes we, at least I do, feel very distant from the actual classroom. So to actually have notes from the classroom or, or just like made my whole day, or if you want to say, week, month, and everything. So thanks again. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ebert. Dr. Thurman?
Good evening. My part of the strategic plan is school decorum, and here's a report that I have for decorum. In an effort to increase programs in the district and improve three, the three major aids, that's academics, attitude, and attendance, the second-year STAR, S-T-A-A-R, program has now saved close to 900 days, count them, 900 days of educational services for students. I think that deserves a round of applause. This is a program, it's a voluntary program that has allowed students to do recovery academic work from their, their home school, also capturing attendance recovery for the student and the district while working on adjusting the right attitude for success at school. The STAR program is targeted to meet the needs of students with a short-term suspension of less than 10 days. The program was designed to service students from grades seven through 12. The administration hopes that the success of the program will allow us to expand the program for the 2019-20 school year. As part of our plan for continued success of meeting the goals of decorum, the district will continue their work on strengthening our student expectation code for students to have access to quality education services while they are being held accountable for violating the student expectation code. The data reflects the levels of intervention and accountability for discipline indices and references in the district. Incidents, I'm sorry. What am I, I think I'm tapping out here. Okay, so data highlights of the STAR program for the 2019-20 school year are as follows. Over 885 days saved for students slated for suspension. Over 127 students serviced this year in the STAR program. And 7th through 12th grade students from all three middle schools and three high schools have participate, participated in the program. So I wanted to say thank you to those who are responsible for working with students under STAR program and to Mr. Gary Beals for consistently providing us with information on how decorum is going on in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thurman. We will now have Ms. Hawkeset.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me, I'm on the talent portion of our strategic plan, and our talented HR department is busy moving, moving the talent in our district around to the new schools. So that is really all they had to say tonight is that they are busy getting ready for the next school year.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkeset. Ms. Ponder?
Good evening. I have the accreditation and achievement portion. During the month of March, the Ferguson-Florescent School District conducted the Teacher of the Year selection process. The mission of the Missouri Teacher of the Year program is to honor, promote, and celebrate excellence in the teaching profession. Each building has named a Teacher of the Year, and each building Teacher of the Year is eligible for the district Teacher of the Year application process to be named this week. We will be celebrating the accomplishments of these outstanding teachers at future, at our future board meeting. Principal meeting, principals meeting professional development included taking a deep dive into student achievement data in preparation for testing this spring. Principals participated in the data team process to identify trends and develop plans for ensuring students and teachers are ready for grade-level assessments and end-of-course exams this coming spring. Lastly, summer school planning is underway. Summer school for identified students will take place June 5th through July 2nd, 2019. And that is all.
Thank you, Ms. Ponder. We will now have Ms. Hart.
Good evening, everyone. I have the build community and stakeholders, engaged stakeholders. I wanted to say congratulations. We had our final round of the Scholar Vote competition, which was held March 2nd, and there was a great turnout, and we look forward to recognizing the champions, their coaches, and the event organizers at next month's board meeting. And as you saw in the shared videos about the past, this past Saturday, Ferguson-Florescent School District hosted the first-ever summer camp fair at North County area. And even though we had a lot of rain, we still had over 1,000 people that were there. We had 63 exhibitors sharing information with families about programs for the summer. Want to thank everyone for coming out for that. We understand that some of our stakeholders still have not heard about the new district app available in the App Store for Apple devices or the Google Play Store for Samsung and other devices. This is a great tool for finding information about the district and schools in one place. The great thing about the app is that it's a two-way communication, so not only will you receive messages from us, you can also get messages to us through several channels on the app. You can find a wide variety of resources, including contact information, participate in surveys, provide feedback, inform us of safety concerns or threats. It is really a great tool. We also would like to help our families by downloading the Prosperity app. That is something new, but you can find a link to that community on the district app. We need 500 people to download the Prosperity app before we can begin sharing our families' needs, so please spread the word so we can get 500 people to do that. Finally, the Boeing Company STEAM Camp is back again. Ferguson-Florescent School District, Boeing United Way, Diversity Council have teamed up again to offer this free innovative camp for kids 5 to 18 on Saturday, July 13th. The STEAM Academy would be at McClure South Berkeley High School. The camp is open, the ages 5 to 18, and will reside through the North St. Louis County area. Please register your child now for this fun, interactive experiences that focus on science, technology, engineering, art, and math. Classes will also include drone demonstrations, science experiments, experience base, basis of aerospace, robotic challenges, and more. That day also includes free lunch, and each participant will receive a gift bag. Space is limited, so don't wait to register for this free camp using the link on our website. Also, if you would like to have information on where your child is to go to school for the 2019-20 school year, you can go on www.forgflores.org/strong. There are maps, and it shows you where the schools are located and who's going to those schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Connie. We will now have Rob.
Just talk really loud. So Mind the Infrastructure and Processes and Technology Services has completed its, part of its work with, working with human resources on the first phase of the teacher placement preferences. I know that's a high priority for a lot of our district staff, figure out where they're going to be at. So Technology is working very closely with HR, and they've completed their work. They're still rocketing on the service request, request. They're currently at 98.4% of overall satisfied, so that's fantastic. And, I don't know, did you guys know that we're moving facilities from Ferguson over here to the Hazelwood STEAM? Well, that's going through the process. And so they're finalizing that as we move along, getting the permits and et cetera. Do we get it? We have a little technical problem here. All right, perfect, thanks. They've met with the vendors, they're going to be putting door security and visitor check systems into the schools. So they've met with the vendors, and they're working out the specs on that right now as well. Playground, there was one in here, they've completed the evaluation of the PK through two playgrounds. That's going to be part of the restructuring, and they're putting the budget together. So where's Terry? When do you think you'll be presenting that to us? Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Rob. Um, hold on. I was already ready until Rob had me doing stuff too, so hold on. Okay, so on, good lord, I'm sorry. Got it. Okay, so on February 26th, we had our first Equity Committee meeting, and I would say it was very successful, and I'm hoping somebody else in the, who was a part of that meeting will also talk about it. But we looked at our goals for that meeting, and I just kind of want to share some of those, which we said that we will be looking at. So we would like to look at advocating for policies with legislation, possibly going to Jeff City. We would like to be able to talk to the students about equity at home and at school. A great focus will make sure that we are making, that we are keeping, keeping expectations high for all of our students. We will be looking at programs district-wide for equity, making sure that education continues to be our highest priority. We will start looking at hiring practices, building relationships between the teacher, the student, and the parent, and most of all, making sure that we have consistency with, throughout equity in our school. Oh, that was hard. So I just want to talk about the presentation, which was going on at Wedgwood. My son had the opportunity to participate today in the Real Men Read, and it was really, really nice, according to him, and just to be able to give back, especially for him at a young age, was just really phenomenal. And I liked that, the fact that he was even invited. So I thank Wedgwood for even having him out there today. And that's all for my report. Thank you. And now we will have the FFNEA representatives.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Webke. I'm currently a kindergarten teacher at Central. I'm on the exec board for FFNEA, and I'm also on the board of directors for MNEA. As you may have heard, the injunction in the lawsuit around House Bill 1413 was granted by the judge on Friday. The FFNEA looks forward to being able to come together with the administration to negotiate around salary and other working conditions that will benefit all FSD staff. Last Wednesday, several FFNEA members, including myself, were able to go to Last Wednesday, several FFNEA members, including myself, were able to go to Jefferson City to meet with our local representatives about the many issues we are facing in education. We were able to advocate for our staff and students around the big issues such as funding for schools, the proposed increase in charter schools, and school vouchers. On Thursday, several FFNEA members also attended MNEA's legislative forum, which included state representatives, teachers, and ESP staff from across the St. Louis area. There are many threats to our public schools across both our state and our nation, and we, as NEA members, are continuing to educate ourselves, our families, and our students in an attempt to keep our public schools strong. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nicole B., and I teach at Airport Elementary School. I teach third grade. At this time, the district is going through changes regarding the redistricting and upcoming new staff placement. Teachers have filled out surveys and began to sign accordingly. We hope that announcements about placements will be, will be made soon. While we appreciate that a nominee of this task for, for HR, the association also hopes the board and the administration recognize the stress the process has brought to many of our staff. As the staff looks for opportunities to have input into the design processes for their new placements, we encourage the administration and the board to please consider providing as many of these opportunities for input as possible. Staff would also benefit from specifics around the plan for moving of materials and supplies sometime in the near future. The FFNEA is looking forward to working with the board and Dr. Davis and supporting the district staff during these deciding changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Yes. Video, so I'm going to show a quick video of a partnership that we're building with New Jerusalem, and so if you would, go ahead and roll that for me.
Hi, my name is Alonzo Adams, Jr. I'm the pastor of New Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church. We're located in Ferguson on Dade, very close to Central Elementary and Ferguson Middle School. We are partnering with the Ferguson-Florescent School District. This is where I grew up, this is where I come from. I went to Central Elementary through Ferguson Middle and graduated from McClure High School in nineteen ninety-two. After coming back to the Ferguson-Florescent School District, I just began to see how our community have somewhat deteriorated in their family structure. A lot of the kids are not being raised by the dual-parented families, some are single-parented, and some are even being raised by grandparents who are working grandparents. So we are here to try to bridge the gap between the kids, the community, and the church.
So I have had an opportunity on a couple of occasions with having our faith community come into our schools, but specifically, we had a breakfast a couple of months ago, I guess it was now, and Pastor Adams, First Lady Adams, both were there, along with a number of pastors and clergy men and women from around our district. And I think it's really important that we tap into the resources available in our local community and the support that they, at New Jerusalem and other congregations are wanting to support our school district on. I'd ask Pastor Adams to step and say a word or two to the board, but I'm putting him on the spot, but I can tell you that he's really interested in, and the church is really interested in partnering specifically with Central Berkeley Elementary next year, the pre-K three-five, as well as Ferguson Middle School. Mr. Ginnah, who's going to be principal at Ferguson Middle, is here tonight, so I'm going to give you an opportunity, hopefully this evening, if not later on, but to meet him, but I just want him to step and say a word, because we have a number of partnerships that we're building, so.
Well, good evening to everyone, to the entire staff, Dr. Davis. We are pleased to be back. Like I said, this is literally where I grew up, had an opportunity to leave out of McClure High School and go to the military, did some wonderful things there, became a pilot, and we did great missions and flew great missions, but in coming home, I'm seeing our system and the overall system has become dilapidated, and we need to do all that we can to partner. We are a part of the Ferguson Ministerial Alliance, and there are so many different faith-based groups that are together, but we don't have a lot of partnerships with the schools. And I believe there's a lot of untapped resources that we can do and that we can have, and even the morale, even within so far as vacation Bible schools. Most of the churches are doing vacation Bible schools all at one time. I'm trying to get the alliance to where we stagnate different times of the, of the entire summer to where kids have opportunities and places to go all summer long. I think that would be so much more beneficial, and all of the community come together to where, and even have shuttles to where these kids will have opportunities to go someplace every week of, of the entire summer, instead of having basically all of the churches having it for two weeks, and the kids still have nothing to do the, the other eight or ten weeks out of the month. So we're just trying to partner as best we can. We had the great opportunity to meet with Dr. Davis and to hear his passion for kids, and to let kids know that people in their own neighborhoods are going out and doing great things, and they can do as much as they want to do. Literally, the sky was the limit for me. So I'm grateful, my wife and I are going to be working with the boys and the girls to do all that we can to try to bridge that gap, and even find out in the home what can we do, because if the kids are frustrated at home, they take that frustration to the school. And the teachers are trying to deal with a child that may have more than just learning issues, if they're having family, or hunger, or all kinds of issues, it's, it's overflowing in the classroom. So whatever we can do to help, we just want to partner in any way that we can.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. So just a few other things, I'm really excited about the partnership, as well as many other partnerships that we're building throughout our community, because it's really going to take a whole village to raise our children in the ways that we know they need it and deserve it. Quality is job one, another, somebody says phrase, but I'm going to use it, because we want them to be educated really, really well. So thank you, Pastor Adams and First Lady Adams. A couple of other things I wanted to add is I had an opportunity to go to the chess fundraiser. We are fortunate to have the St. Louis Chess Club, along with Ascension Healthcare, that they, you know, given us hundreds of thousands of dollars to support Ferg Floors putting chess in our schools. In fact, Mr. Ginnah was there, we had about twenty students from Hall, from Hall's Ferry Elementary School that were there as well, and this was over at the Four Seasons Hotel downtown St. Louis last week, and it was absolutely amazing. I was really happy to see the support that they give for our district. So we're going to continue that conversation, because we need more students taking chess and getting those critical thinking and learning skills. I met with several groups over the last few days, and actually, you know, in the last month, but most recently, I met with students, I've had some really good opportunities to talk about some really important issues to them. They were really wanting to go deeper around restructuring and the impact and, you know, pros and cons about a number of things. I'm happy to say that our students are more engaged than we think and give them credit for. They know what issues are in the community, and they want to be a part of that conversation, they want a seat at the table, and I'm so happy to give them a seat and give them a voice. And I always tell them, you know, we may not do what you say or want us to do, but we will listen, and we can collaborate together. But everything that we do, folks, and I believe, all of you believe this, that it has to be in the best interest of all children in our community. I also had an opportunity to meet with the Teacher Advisory Council and the Parent Advisory Council most recently, and we talked specifically about a couple of things, but one with the graduate profile. That, that is actually already online. We want our community to vote on our profile for the last two years or so. We've had meetings in this very room with, we've had partners from Washington University, from UMSO, from parents and other organizations, and so we've built out three examples of graduate profiles. That is actually online, and so we encourage you to go online and vote for that. If you don't have our app, please get it, just go to the App Store, Android or Apple, Ferg Floor, R2, R, it's actually two, not capital I's, but R2, and download the app. Much information is on the app. And as Ms. Hartz said earlier, you can also download the Proposity app. Both those are really important, because they can help us in the community. The one thing I love about when we get to five hundred users on the Proposity app is that we can start supporting families. You can donate money, a dollar, a hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, whatever you want to give, but those dollars will get to families, so we can give more support to our families as they need it. Also, graduation is coming up. It's right around the corner. We are, you know, so spring break starts Friday, so our students will be out Friday and all of next week, and then when we come back, we'll be in the last week of March. Grading period ended March eighth, so we are in the, the fourth quarter, if you will, of the, of the year, so we're on home stretch. Graduation is May nineteenth, I believe it is, yes, May nineteenth, so Sunday. Each graduate will receive ten tickets. We've been working diligently with the St. Charles Family Arena, and all those details are laid out, so we're excited about that, have had several meetings, and we feel strong we'll have a much more successful year than last, but looking forward to our graduates. Couple of other things, quickly, restructuring updates. Mr. Boyd, Attorney Boyd is going to come in just a bit and talk about some of those details, but teachers will, in my conversations with teachers yesterday and our advisory council, that was what we spent most of the time having discussions about, and I always try to be thoughtful and careful around the conversations we're having, because I get that this is a stressful time, and we want to make sure that teachers know their places before you go home for spring breaks, and Mr. Boyd will talk about that. And we also talked about some of the things that Ms. Ben you mentioned a minute ago, Ms. Whipke, in getting some clear, some clarity around that transition piece, right? So that is, I know, really important to you, and, you know, we'll make sure that you have that, those details. And Ms. Beals here, and Ms. Wojcowski, so you thought I could say your name, didn't you? But, but, but we, you know, teachers are priority, and we, I want you to know personally from me, that we are doing everything we can, so Attorney Boyd will talk about that some, we'll have those details laid out, so that you can, so I want you to enjoy your break, I want you to rest and relax. Next, actually not next Friday, this Friday, we canceled the PD, and, you know, we've listened to what teachers are saying, because you have been stressed out, and it's a lot of work. So what we have done is, you know, and I've heard, you know, overwhelmingly, teachers are happy about that, and I'm glad to hear that, that you have the day to be able to do some things in your classroom and breathe and get ready for some of the transitions that are going to be made. So hopefully, we'll be able to give you some more news that'll be helpful. Start and stop times certainly will start different next year, I talked about that in our advisory councils for all of our schools, particularly for high schools, right now starts at seven fifteen, next year in August, eight oh five, we're excited about that, because we feel it'll be helpful for our attendance, we need to get our attendance up, that's the one piece that, you know, kept us, we're at ninety-two point one, we need to get to a hundred, so we need to really look at the data and figure out where those gaps are, and attendance is one of those. Block scheduling certainly will start next year, we're excited about the A period AB Day, more, more students will get more classes, really good conversation about that with students. One of the things that came up with students was, and this is probably from, was from one of the high schoolers who was concerned, she was concerned about her, her sibling, who's younger, and she mentioned that, okay, so with these changes in starts and stop times, what's going to happen, you know, with my little, I don't know if she has a sister or brother, but we specifically looked at the starting stop times to make sure that our high schoolers and our middle schoolers would get out earlier than our elementary schoolers, right? And so there's a shift there. Dr. Jamison and Dr. P. Walker have been working diligently with some of our partners, the Family Wide, the Boys and Girls Club, so as we firm those plans up, we'll be able to come back to you and talk about before and after school care, because we know how important that is for families before school care, so that families who work and need to get to work when our pre-K two doesn't start until nine twenty, what resources will be available for, for you, as well as our after school care, so that's, that's forthcoming. Finally, we had some conversations about our uniforms, so I've had a number of conversations with parents about uniforms, and so, you know, I, I'm, I've not bought a recommendation to the board about uniforms, so please make sure that you, that we're clear. What we have is a survey that we've put out, and we want teachers, I've talked about this with teachers, the Teacher Advisory Council, as well as students and parents, we want everybody to go online, get our app, you can, you know, do the survey online, and give us your thoughts and your opinion about whether you want or don't want uniforms, and then we can go from there to talk about what other discussions need to happen before we even get to a recommendation, if any at all, to the school board. But we just want to begin engaging our families about what that could look like, and it was, it was a great discussion. Lastly, I thought the Equity Committee did, it was absolutely amazing. I want to give Dr. Graves a hand for the work that she did on that. One of the things I hope we can do, and I mentioned this there, we, in our meeting this past week with Chief, you know, Lowry from the Florescent PD, as well as Major Fagan, we were talking specifically about partnering, and I hope that with our Equity Committee, we can do some of that work that we've been doing with the Educational Equity Consultants. Administration has been doing that work, some schools have taken on that work as well with teachers and some with students. I think that's going to be really critical with adults in our community who are partnering with the school district, so I'd love to see, you know, folks like Pastor Adams and First Lady and other key leaders in the community, and Chiefs from the Police Department, so as well as the committee, coming together and having some of that work done, and I think it's going to be just a game changer for, for our community. So we are one district united, and we're going to continue to work hard bringing people together. That's really what it's about, is bringing everybody together. So, thank you. That's my lengthy report.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. I did want to say one thing to make an announcement. There will be a fundraiser for Coach Todd Shelton on Wednesday, March twentieth, between five to ten PM, at Bakewood Fire Pizza, located at two-three-five South Florescent Road in Ferguson, Missouri.
To add on to that, you have to have the flyer, is my understanding, is what they posted, so I don't know, is it, I know it's shared on Facebook, but how else, how else can they get the flyer? Anybody have any idea? That's what somebody had posted, that you had to bring the flyer. What's that? You did it. So is it available on the district website? Can it be?
Can we add it? All right, sounds good. Thank you. The board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items. At the start of each board meeting prior to the public comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be, to be addressed, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and keeping with district policies four zero five four, four zero five nine, and personnel law, should refrain from making negative comments that are personably identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period, the board president may make clarifying remarks at the end of the comment session to correct any misstatement of facts. We will now have Mr. Robinson. And he will be talking about the polling places.
Good evening, Board, and Dr. Davis, and yes, I am Ossie Robinson. The number of polling places for this April two election has been reduced to twenty-six, and last year it was thirty-four, so that's like twenty-three and a half percent decrease. Does the board have any collaboration with the Board of Elections for this kind of thing? Some, some people are concerned if this is voter suppression. That's a significant decrease. Typical card that the Board of Elections sends out to let us know where we, where our polling place is. Most people probably out of habit, don't really- Most people probably out of habit, don't really pay that much attention to it. So we're going to have, out of the low turnout that typically happens for this school board election, are we going to have people going to polling places, getting sent someplace else? And then some of them will go one vote. So that's, that's, I think that's a major concern. And the question is, will the Board of Elections do anything over and above sending that card out to make people aware of the fact that their polling place has changed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. We will now have Pamela Powell talk about teacher placement, busing, and before and after care providers.
Trying to get this done. Good evening. Thank you for all that you all do. I know it's very time consuming. Change is, change is good, right? But change is constant. And what makes change successful is how we go about it. And I have some concerns about how we're going about our restructuring, making sure that it's fair and that it's transparent. As far as teachers are concerned, I'm very concerned about the teacher placement. And I wanted to know if tenure, as it has in the past, if it's going to mean something going forward. That's it for the teachers part of it. I also have concerns about busing. Seems like the whole district is going to be bused with the restructuring process. And with that, what I witnessed was a Ferguson Florissant school bus loaded with kids and the back half of the kids were standing. So will there be bus monitors or cameras or something to protect the student's safety on the buses? Also, facilities. This is a big move and it seems like it's going to have to happen over the summer. How is that going to be done as far as renovations to the schools? Because, for example, my daughter's school is going to be the Innovation School. And it's an elementary school, so now it's going to be for older children. And when you go into the bathrooms, if you looked into the mirror, you would see your legs. So there are some actual structural renovations that need to take place. And that's a lot of work for all of those schools for this short rushed period that we have. The last thing is the community. The information that was shared, was shared with people like parents, go to the website, go to the app, do this, that. But it's not really being shared with the community. For example, my daughter has before and after care at a Lutheran church. And that church is outside of Ferguson Florissant School District Services. And they are unaware of our time change and everything. So it's directly going to affect a lot of businesses. You don't need to make that communications with them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The administration presents the following items for approval under consent agenda. Board Secretary, can you please read dispersments?
For payroll, teachers and non-teacher, we have $8,627,394.12. For operational dispersments, $2,223,425.02. This makes a total of $10,850,819.14.
May I have a recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
We'll give it to Jessica. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now have Dr. Hazel talk about the McClure senior trip as well as the Principal Cedric Gerald.
And Mr. Downing.
And Mr. Downing, yes.
A senior class trip is being planned for McClure's senior class of 2019 based on their credit accumulation and on-track graduation status. This trip is an incentive for the fulfillment of the Missouri High School graduation requirements. The trip's being planned for March 29th, leaving after school through April 1st to Branson, Missouri. This is for information for the Board.
Yes.
Somehow new listeners.
Well, we've had trouble in the past.
Yeah.
And so I just want to make sure, because we have banned seeing the trips before. And I just want to make sure. Can you tell me a ratio?
Yes, right now it's about 1 to 12.
Well, our problem before was alcohol, so please make sure.
Absolutely safety. Yes. Yes. They are both, they'll both be attending.
They, they had one last year.
Yes, we did. It was really successful.
And this year they've been going to Branson, Missouri. So we expect even better this year.
That's right. Thank you.
All right, I have a, I have a question. It has nothing to do with this, though. Is there a group of students at McClure who are going to Hawaii because of Harris-Stowe? Or is that a wonderful rumor that's just being circulated?
So it's not a rumor. So we did receive the Trio Grant, the upward bound Trio Grant in partnership with Harris-Stowe. And they are working out details right now. Still in the planning stages. But there are opportunities for those students that we wouldn't otherwise be able to fund. So, for example, last summer, they took an all-expense-paid trip to four universities. It spanned a week's time. The students received cash money before they got on the bus. They went to Vanderbilt. They went to Tennessee State University. They went to Mahari Medical College. They went to Fisk and Georgia State. They went to an all-expense-paid outing at Dave and Buster's. They went to SeaWorld and we toured the King site, and that was at no cost to the students. And so this is very well-funded and all it took was time and effort. Coincidentally, those students did return. They'll get the same opportunity this summer. They'll attend a residential camp at Harris-Stowe. They'll receive ACT prep in math and ELA. That's all-expense-paid residential camp at Harris-Stowe. That is a five-year grant that we received. It is renewable after those five years. And we're already in conversation about making sure that that is exclusive for McClure, although other schools and Ferg floor can apply should they choose to do so. So I did attend the summer college tour last summer with the students. And it's just an amazing opportunity at no cost to our students. And one word, access.
It wasn't a secret, was it?
It was not a secret. It was not a secret. Yeah, well, the ones who are in, so one of the things that we've tried to do, we're already having conversations about how to explain, expand that because we do want to be inclusive of the students who'll be coming over to us from MSB. We do have a set amount of slots that they give us every year so that the grant will expand or will be extended through those five years. So we're in conversation right now about increasing the number of students that they can have in the umbrella so that we can begin doing some recruiting and having some conversations with the students at MSB. So we're just trying to be inclusive.
Sounds good. Thank you. We will now talk about Avid.
Good evening. I am here with Charlie Moore, our District Avid Coordinator. In just a few moments, he's going to give you a brief presentation. Avid, advancement via individual determination, is a global nonprofit organization dedicated to closing the achievement gap by preparing all students for college and other post-secondary opportunities. McClure High School would like to continue its partnership with Avid for the next three years, the 1920 and the 2021 school year, at a cost not to exceed $22,648. You did already approve some additional training for our teachers in the Avid program this year. Last month, the Board meeting at the cost of $4160. And so we thank you for that. Going forward, Johnson Wallbash, 6th Grade Center, Wedgewood 6th Grade Center, Cross Keys Middle School, Ferguson Middle School, STEAM Middle, McClure North, and STEAM High would also like to implement Avid for the next three school years at a total three-year cost not to exceed $220,648. So we are asking for the Board to approve the purchase of Avid at all middle and high schools for the next three years. And Mr. Moore has a short presentation to give you some more information.
Good afternoon. As Ms. Best said, my name is Charlie Moore and I'm the Avid Coordinator here for Ferguson Florissant. Just for perspective, I graduated from North Carolina A&amp;T State University in Greensboro, North Carolina, and Wake Forest University, and more so to the point, I am a former Avid student. So I know of the benefits of Avid. The acronym Avid stands for advancement via individual determination. And Avid is a college and career readiness system that seeks to ensure that our students will not only be accepted into a college or university after graduation, but that they are well-equipped with the foundational skills that are necessary for them to excel once they get there. To achieve this goal, Avid has a dual-pronged approach. The first is the Avid elective, where they are explicitly taught those foundational skills that they will need in order to excel in those spaces of opportunity. We've all been asked throughout our high school and middle school careers to be organized, to have good time management, or to take focus notes. But these are not skills that are explicitly taught in all core content areas. The second approach to Avid of this dual-pronged piece is to provide teachers with a compilation of best teaching strategies. Avid helps with these teacher practices by using the WICRA model, writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. And these WICRA strategies support good teaching across all core content areas. The structure of our Avid system in our secondary schools will fall into one of two categories, one or both categories. Avid school-wide and at the Avid elective. As I previously explained, with the Avid elective, you are explicitly taught those foundational skills. But Avid school-wide is the goal. So our plan is for the 6th grade centers to be taught Avid content, Avid and content-only spaces in those classrooms. So no Avid elective in the 7th grade also, but 8 through 12, they actually have a small cohort of that elective. One of the four domains of Avid, you have systems, leadership, instruction, and culture. But one of the biggest pieces of Avid is this school-wide piece that says that Avid helps by creating a college-going culture for all of our students. Some of the expected outcomes for Avid school-wide is there will be an increase in the educational aspirations of all of our students. Just recently, just this week, we found out that two of our Avid elective students were selected to participate in the Washington University College Prep Program, a program that they were unaware of and that many of them did not believe that they were even capable of applying. But through the Avid elective, we, we taught some of those skills, such as interviewing skills that they will need to, to get into that program. And we're excited about that. There should be an increase in the graduation rate and the number of students applying to colleges and universities. Our students will be better equipped to tackle the challenges of a rigorous high school experience because Avid elective students are mandated to take an honors class. And most importantly, Avid will be a vehicle to assist in closing that opportunity gap. And once they get there, they are ready. This year at McClure High School, we piloted Avid. Principal Gerald made a unique decision to mandate Avid for all 9th graders. And at our summer institute, which if you are selected to go as an Avid site team member to get that training, you meet as a team to figure out your points of emphasis. At McClure High School, we started with three points of emphasis and organically we moved to four. But those were organizational, organizational capacity where every Avid student was mandated to carry a binder and they were taught those, how to use it and how to effectively use it in our core content classes. And our teachers was asked to make sure that they're checking those binders in those core areas. Focus note-taking, there's a five-step process to that focus note-taking piece, which starts with creating your notes in your own, your own way. And then it ends by making sure that you apply those notes. Collaboration, of course, we talked about the WICRA strategies, but we made sure that every teacher know that collaboration was a point of emphasis. So and even in our core content classes, we've asked that we make sure that there is some method of collaboration for at least 15 minutes in those, in that instructional time. And then finally, self-advocacy. Every Monday, we do what we call a bag checks, behavior, Avid, and grades. And it ensures that our students are aware where they are in those classrooms. And not only, not only that they're aware, that they're able to have a productive conversation with the teachers and getting what they need. At the end of this semester, we had a student survey that was presented to our students so that we could get some quantitative data about what, how, how we were achieving what we wanted to achieve. And 60% of the students said they felt more equipped to tackle the challenges of a rigorous high school experience because of the strategies taught in Avid. 91% said they received instruction in organizational tools to keep track of coursework and to help organize their thinking. And 88% said they'd learned to set goals and to monitor their grades to ensure that they are college-ready. In the next slide, we have a short video of some of our Avid students and how they see Avid.
The acronym for Avid stands for advancement via individual determination.
Avid is a college and career readiness system that prepares us for life after high school, whether it's at college or a workplace.
Avid teaches you not to worry about competing with just your class, but competing against kids across the world and where you want to be in your future career.
Avid teaches our students those foundational skills that they need. As we piloted Avid at McClure High School, our three focus areas were organizational structures, where we, we provided binders for every Avid student, collaboration through WICRA, and finally, focus note-taking.
At the beginning of the year, each student was given an Avid binder. And the Avid binder was used for them to put their notes in a safe place and they could be organized with their thoughts so they could be successful for class.
In our Avid class, we do bag checks every week to advocate for ourselves, to make sure we're on track to win our goals.
Avid forces you to work with others, not just the people you're comfortable with, but to make sure we're all on the road to success.
Here in the Ferguson Florissant School District, Avid will be a vehicle to help address that opportunity gap. But the second piece of that coin is to make sure that once our students are in those spaces of opportunity, that they have the skills and tools necessary to not only be there, but to stay there and excel once they're there. We look forward to replicating the successes of the Avid system that we have at McClure High School all across the district. Thank you.
May I get a motion?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will talk now about college algebra and probability statistics.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Volpe.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Davis. Due to the need for curricular resources that meets the needs to prepare students for college and career readiness in math in the district, we are requesting the purchase of textbooks for two new dual-credit math courses. The new courses of college algebra and probability and statistics courses will be offered for dual-credit through UMSL. The textbooks recommended for purchase for college algebra would be Algebra and Trigonometry, Blitzer's Sixth Edition, and for probability and statistics, Elementary Stats, Larson's Seventh Edition. Both of these texts are from Pearson. These resources will be for use in high schools in our district. If approved, these resources will be ordered so that the teachers receive the materials before the end of the school year. And PD will be provided in May, summer and at the beginning of the school year. The funding source for college algebra for $32,003.10 and probability and statistics for $23,524.75, which for a total of $55,527.85 comes from the textbook budget. Recommendation, approve the purchase of Algebra and Trigonometry, Blitzer's Sixth Edition, and Elementary Statistics, Larson's Seventh Edition for Pearson.
May I get a recommendation to approve the purchase?
Somebody.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Any? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I just wanted to add, we do have a third course, BC calculus, but we're using our current text, which covers both Calc I and Calc II material. So that will be a total of seven courses that we'll be offering for dual credit and mathematics for the students be able to obtain. BC calc alone is 10 credit hours for, like I said, a total of 32 hours for those seven courses through the district.
Thank you. All right. And now we will have Mr. Boyd, staff placement process.
Good evening, Board. The staff placement process for the restructuring commenced on February 15th. The first survey closed on the 26th. We then did a second survey that opened on March 4th and closed on March 6th and then we did a third survey that opened on the 7th and closed on the 10th. All together, we had 449 positions that were part of the survey. We had 429 staff members that were directed to take the survey and we were able to approve 412 matches as of today. The survey and the positions, it was decided upon early by both the administration and working very closely with the NEA around what would happen with buildings and staff members impacted by the survey. Our common understanding was that only buildings that were going to be subject to repurposed, being repurposed or closed and those respective staff members will be part of the survey. We then built a survey and used several weeks to create actual original software program to create a survey instrument that would not only collect the responses from teachers, but also help us sort in real time. So under our CBA, when there is a restructuring, teachers are allowed to pick three positions and then they are slotted based upon seniority. So we start at number one, one gets slotted, two, three, four. What we did is we stopped wherever someone was not able to have placement and then where we could, we would contact a person to see if they could make new positions or make new choices. If not, that's when we went into the second survey. So we were able to place from the first survey approximately 200 staff members at that point. And by the time we got to the third survey, we had about 90 staff members that we needed to place. All of this was done in accordance with how we look at placements under restructuring, which is first we work, we look at certification and then we look at seniority. The other thing that comes to play in situations such as this, when we're restructuring and there is any impact on FTEs, we also have to pay attention to the state teacher tenure act. And in the tenure act, where you have a tenured staff member that is without a position due to the restructuring, that person cannot be without employment so long as you have a probationary teacher that has the same certification. There are certain nuances that, and caveats to when a probationary teacher could be bumped out. For example, if there's certain specialized training that is part of their role, then that probationary teacher will not be bumped out under the teacher tenure act. Any persons that will be impacted in terms of their employment status, we will be contacting them personally and once all those persons are contacted, we will then be sending out a notification tomorrow for all teachers that were successfully matched. Are there any questions?
That sounds great. Thank you so much. We will now have Laura.
And Mr. O'Neill.
So sorry.
Good evening, Board and public. We are very excited to be up here today to talk to you and I'm very excited to see Ms. Whipke and our friends from the church because what we have to talk about is going to impact you guys. We are very excited to talk to you today about the Kaboom Playground Grant that we applied for and were granted. This playground is going to happen at Central Elementary School, so Central Elementary School is going to get a brand new playground. We're going to take out the old playground and put in a brand new one. So with the Kaboom Playground Grant, it's all about community. So it's a community grant, so this playground grant is not only for Central Elementary, it's for the Central Elementary community. The people that live in the neighborhoods can come and play on this grant, in this playground and so we're very, very excited. So the build day, and we don't get, so we don't get to choose the build day because it's this whole process and there's a funder that's involved and the funder chooses the build date. So our build day is going to be May 10th of 2019 and I'm going to kind of, we're going to kind of go through the process because it's a very, very detailed process. So the people at Kaboom started this, you know, we have put in our application and the Kaboom grant, people have walked us through that, they contacted a funder. The people that are going to be involved are our Ferguson Florissant School District staff, our parents and students throughout the district and then also the community members and community groups. So that's why I'm glad you guys are here. So getting to know the players, what Kaboom does is they coordinate this whole entire process and it is a very, very organized process. They walk you through everything. I've been very impressed up till now. It's a arduous process, but it's very, it's very detailed and they help you through the whole thing, so it's very nice and it's very fast, yes. And then the community partner is the school district. So Kaboom, they contact the funding partner and they generously donate the money for the materials and for the structures and for the beautification process. And then our part is that we recruit staff, parents, community members to help assist with this build. And together, we start from the design all the way up to the end. So the process is very, like I said, very detailed. We submitted an application to the community and we talked about the community and we talked about Central Elementary and we chose Central Elementary because it was, it's one of our pre-K 2 through, pre-K 2 schools. And we knew that we were going to have to put a new playground there because the playground equipment there is adequate, but not for little kids. And so we knew that we were going to have to do something there. So we submitted an application. We had a lot of history on Central Elementary School and we had a lot of really great community history too. And so we submitted the application, Kaboom received the application and then they set up a 90 minute phone call and that 90 minute phone call was, you would think, oh my gracious, 90 minutes, but Dr. Davis was there and Kevin and we invited a couple of parents. So I'm sorry, he's not here, but Mr. Edman came. He was there because he's got children in preschool and he's also with the Ferguson Baptist Church and so he leads the youth group. So we thought, well, we'll pull him in because we can get the youth to get on that project. And then we also invited one of the neighbors who overlooks, who actually watches over our playground for us all the time is Scott, is Steve Weigert. And he was the Ferguson of Mayor at one time and now he owns Sports Print. And so we invited him and he came to the meeting. And then we had Shantana Heard because of early ed and then we had, of course, Dr. McAfee. And so we had this great meeting, they asked us a whole bunch of questions and we answered all their questions and they were very, very happy. They were, they could see the commitment that we were all ready to participate in this project. It was a great, we had some snacks for them, so it was a really nice event. The funder then took all this information, they took our application and they took the results from our survey or from our phone conversation and they decided that they would grant us this playground. So we're very excited about that. So next step is the design process. And what is, the next step is called design day and that's actually happening tomorrow. And so at this, at this design step, we meet the Kaboom Project Manager, he's flying in. We meet representatives from the funder and the funder is actually, we were kind of under a, we weren't supposed to say who the funder is, but I called today and asked and so we can announce that the funder is AM Better. It's a part of Centene, so they provide insurance. So they're part of the insurance group, you know, like if you need to get insurance through the marketplace, they give that to you. So they are our funder and so we get to meet some of their people. We get to meet our expert designers who are actually our students and our community kids. And then we also get to form a committee to do some different things throughout this project. So like I said, design day is tomorrow, Thursday, March 14th and it's at Central Elementary School. It starts at 2:30. We will, so Terry and some of his staff and I will walk with the project manager from Kaboom. He's going to survey the area and take, we've already taken pictures. I mean, we, this was like a big process, we had to take pictures and set out cones and it was.
It was a snow day.
It was a snow day. So, so he will come in and actually look at it and make sure there's not any, where he's having Dig Right come out and make sure that that's all, so that's going on from 2:30 to 4:00. Then from 4:00 to 5:00, the students will come and they will meet in the gym. We have tables set up and they will play games and they're going to have balloons and they're really going to excite the kids. And then the kids will sit down and they'll say, hey, what do you want your playground to look like? And the kids are actually going to draw out what they think that their playground is going to look like. So that's the kids portion. Then at, from 5:00 to 7:00 is the adult portion and so we will have some pizza and some salad. So if anybody would like to come to this tomorrow, you're more than welcome to because we're going to have plenty of food. And then the adults will see, the design project manager will show like a video of what is going to happen and then we will look through components and different magazines to see different things that we might want in a playground. And so then at that point, that designer will take all that information from the kids and from what we said and he's going to take it and, and come up with a plan and he'll give it to Landscape Structures, who is the playground company. They will come up with three different plans and then they're going to send those plans to us and then we get to vote on what our playground looks like. So with that, it's a pretty cool process. So I'm going to turn it over to Terry because he's got a lot of work to do the next few days.
So it's been a really fun project and they're, and they're so great with their support and the things they do are amazing. I'm amazed that it's done in one day, but we'll be removing all the playground equipment. We'll, as Laura already mentioned, Dig Right will come out, mark all the utilities for us. We're currently collecting soil testing, so we were taking boring samples, looking for lead and arsenic. We have no reason to believe we have any of that. This will be 2,500 square feet. Now that was one of the neat things about it, we submitted our plan, they said, can you make it bigger? We've never had anybody grant say, can you make it bigger? Can you spend more money? And we said, absolutely. So we'll also provide electric and water and things like that for the, for the day of the actual build out. We'll bring our own equipment, some of our equipment to help with this. We'll have to make sure that we have ADA accessibility when this is through. We'll probably have to do some sidewalk work and my staff will be able to do that. We'll be providing parking, seating tables and sound system for that day so everybody has a place to eat and sit and enjoy the day. So there's a lot of pre-work going on for us beforehand.
And also on top of that, there were many different committees that they asked you to get. So Antonio with SFE was also part of this call and so he's volunteered with his staff to create a menu because they provide breakfast and lunch for the volunteers that day and snacks and water. So they will be providing that for them. And then also Shantana Heard and Dr. McAfee, they, they are going to hit up a play committee. So this whole time that the build's going on, there's going to be kids playing and it's really going to be a cool thing. So they will be coming up with the activities. And then Kevin Hampton and his group will come up with the PR plan, they'll help develop the opening and closing and it's really going to be a cool thing. And the people from Kaboom will be there with their public people and the people from the funder and whatever they are, they'll be there too with their publishing people. So it's going to be a great day. So the day before is May 9th and that's prep day and that's when the playground equipment, equipment and mulch arrives, volunteers come and they prepare the site for the build day and then they put up the welcoming sign. So there's going to be a permanent sign put up at the entrance. And then all volunteers, if you would like to come volunteer, you get a t-shirt. So that's a cool thing too. Then on the day of the event, we will, is May 10th and we will have a morning kickoff ceremony. There will be 200 volunteers. The other thing that the funder does is they, they will give us 150 volunteers. So they will give us volunteers and then the rest is the people that we will recruit. We've, we've reached out to FYI, they said that they would help us with that. We've reached out to the First Baptist Church through Doug Edman and I think we'll probably reach out to you guys to see if you would have anybody available. And then, you know, some of our teachers and staff, administration will be there. There will be a lot of people, neighbors, the neighborhood group is getting contacted, so there'll be a lot of people there. Six hours later, after we start, this playground will be fully erect and ready to go. So it's really a pretty cool thing. There'll be experts there to help us, but they'll run us through this whole process. In the meantime, there's going to be music, there's going to be DJ, it's going to be a really cool event. We're going to invite the Ferguson Police and the Ferguson Fire Department, they came out to one of our events at Central School before and they made it a lot of fun. So we're going to invite the city of Ferguson people to come out too, so that they can be part of this community build day. And then the day will end with a closing, with a closing thing. So here are some pictures of some other Kaboom events. The very first picture is the very part of, the very first part of the day where everybody's excited to work. And then the very second picture is when they're cutting the ribbon. And this is not our playground because we haven't designed it yet, but this is what our playground could look like. This is one of the structures that Landscape does, so we're really excited to see what happens with that.
Ours will also, I want to add, be in two.
Yes, thank you.
Will be two different structures because of the age differences at our, at our school since it's pre-K through 2. And so they're, they actually said they will separate it and have two different structures for us.
So that's really cool too for our younger kids. So like I said, we're going to involve our staff, the Central Elementary staff, students and parents will be involved. Early education, the staff has really stepped up. We're going to have PAT teachers there, they're going to be recruiting parents through their, their ways of doing things and our early education teachers because they're going to be at this school also. Like I said, the Ferguson Baptist Church Youth Group and some of those people will be here, FYI has been invited and they're going to participate in design day and the neighborhood residents and the city of Ferguson employees. So we really hope to make this a big, huge community event and it's really going to be a cool thing. So we're really excited and this is just for information only, by the way.
Any questions, anyone? Discussions?
I just want to say that, so if you ever seen Extreme Home Makeover with Top Hennington and they've moved that bus, like it'll be that kind of day. So if you are free, come out. They'll provide t-shirts for everybody and it'll be 200 plus people there in the entire community right around Central. I mean, it's going to be absolutely amazing, so please come. Media and all that good stuff, so I'm excited about it for our community.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Laura, one more time.
All right. Oh, you can go sit down. All right, thank you. So tonight I'm presenting the preliminary budget. So this whole project budget development process, there's a lot of things that you have to consider when you're developing the budget. The first thing that's really important at this point in time is that we can only develop the budget with the information that we have at this time. It's still early in the year, we don't have the state information, the state has guestimates of what they think it's going to look like. The county, we don't have the assessments yet from the county. So it's a lot of, I use a lot of historical information when trying to figure out what our preliminary budget is going to look like. We always have to be focused and make a deliberate effort to always do what's best for our kids. I feel that we do a really good job of that in cabinet anymore. We really look at the data. Anytime someone wants to do some kind of a project, we really look at the data, we pull all the numbers and we try to look at that to see, is this something that's, you know, really something that we need for our childrens? Because we really want to make sure that our money is focused on what the kids' needs are. This is a really lonely and underappreciated job because nobody ever really wants to say, we're giving you money, but they always want to come to me and say, we need money. So it's really one of those jobs that I just kind of have to go, oh gosh, you know? So it's not really a very appreciated job. And our perceived wants always seem greater than what our needs are. So again, it goes back to the data. What is the data saying? I know that we really want this, whatever it is, but is that something that we really, really need? Is it, can we focus our money somewhere where we really need those needs at? And right now, the preliminary budget only focuses on the operating budget. So what that means is all the capital needs, that's all pushed aside right now. We really just focus on what we need in the classroom and instruction. So our sources of revenue, we get 58% of our money is from local revenue, 31% of our money is received from the state, 8% is received from federal and 3% is other, like we might charge tuition for different things or homeless transportation, you know, things like that. The property taxes are our main source of our local funds and then there are also other taxes involved like personal property tax, there's surtax on equipment and on the various manufacturing companies that we have around here. And there is a state sales tax called Prop C that they collect and distribute to school districts, so that is also a big portion of funding that we get. The tax rate is authorized by the voters in the district and the tax rate can be adjusted up to a ceiling, up to that tax rate ceiling every year when there are changes in assessments. The tax rate can go up or it can go down, which we have done that in the past as well. And then the board does set that rate October 1st of every year. So our local property taxes are based on the assessed valuation of property in the district and we multiply that out by our tax rate, which right now is $5.49. And then we, and to put it into the budget, we look at our collection rate. So typically we've been collecting our taxes at about 92%. So we put that factor in there and that's how much, how much we figure out we're getting in local property tax. As you can see, so the revenue we receive is based on the assessed valuation and as you can see, we had some pretty bad years here, but things are getting better and we're really excited that the assessments are going back up because that's good for the community. It's really good that the assessments are going up and it's good for the school district as well. 2019 is a reassessment year and assessments are, we believe, or I believe that they will continue to increase. We do save, the taxpayers are saved because I'm hearing that the assessments are going up pretty much, but there is a Handicap Cock Amendment that states that we cannot raise your taxes to like gouge you just because those assessments go up. We are cap, capping the taxes. We can't increase our revenue by more than 1.9%. So I do know that, you know, in our So, I do know that, you know, in our preliminary budget, I just increased it by 1.9%, even though our assessments are, I believe, are gonna go up higher than that. So, I believe that with this 1.9%, that we should receive an additional $1 million from our prior year collections. And again, this is just me believing, so hopefully, that's, that could change. Also, we receive the sales tax money, and that is based on our weighted average daily attendance. The state does anticipate that there will be an increase to the total sales tax money, and so that could possibly give us an additional $700,000 from the prior year. So, I went to Jeff City last week and went to a meeting with the people that talked about the budgets, and the governor is very pro-public school, so we're very happy about the governor really wanting to fund school districts. And so, he is recommending an increase of $61 million to the formula so that we can fully fund it, so that's great news. And he's also recommending a $5 million increase to the transportation. Now, $5 million across the state of a bunch of buses isn't a lot, but it's a little bit, so it's an increase, and that does help. The state is now parshaling funding early education, so that will also help us. However, even though the governor wants to put more money, the state revenue collections are down from the prior year by 5%, so we're hoping that the state collection of revenue does increase a little bit, so that we can actually see these numbers really go into reality. So, the district receives state funding from the following sources. We get money from the state foundation formula, and what's also called Classroom Trust Fund, that is one, those two pieces make up one piece of money, so whenever the gambling proceeds go up, then the other pieces go down, so it's just kind of, there's two different parts of that formula, but you don't get any additional money from the gambling proceeds. We do get money for transportation, for early childhood special ed, and for parents as teachers. We get other miscellaneous sources of revenue from state, but these are the major ones that we get. With the addition of our, we added several full-day preschool classes this year, but not a lot, just a few of them. So, we do anticipate that we will see an increase of our ADA. However, our ADA has been going down every year, so we have been experiencing it, like decreases of like $1 million each year. So, hopefully, we're hoping just that state aid will stay stable this year with the addition of those full-day classrooms. And then next year, then with the more added preschool, we'll see even more the next year. We're always a year behind with that. The district will still continue to see full funding for the early childhood special ed program, and transportation will see a slight increase. So, looking at the revenue on this chart, the red line is what I put 2017 actual, 2018 actual, what I had budgeted, and then what we think is gonna be in next year's budget is in the blue. So, you can see that our local revenue is gonna go up, our county revenue just remains flat all the time. Our state revenue, though, will remain, will remain steady, which is good, because it's has been going down. And then we get some federal revenue, but that is just to reimburse us for the federal programs that we have, and then there is a little bit of other revenue, but not much on that. So, the total operating revenue from all sources, so putting everything together, not just our major ones, we will see an increase of approximately 825 from the previous year. And that, again, is just an estimate, and hopefully, with, as the year goes on, and before I get ready to do my June actual budget, we will have more information, so I will have some better numbers for that. But right now, I do anticipate an increase of 825,000. And then we need to look at our expenditures. With, I tried to add in the restructuring savings into this presentation, and just the savings only, so, and there's something else that happened here, too. We started contracting out our subservices this year. In the past, that's always been charged to certified salary accounts, and now that's being moved over to the purchase services area. So, we are gonna see a decrease in our salary costs for 2020, and we are going to see a little bit of an increase in purchase services, and that's just because we're moving money from, an expenditure from one area to another, but we do think that we will see some savings in the certified salary cost. We did have a savings and benefits for this year, the red is this year, so you could see that it was, the budget was higher than we were actually spending, and that is because we had a good excess fund in our insurance fund, that we can only spend on insurance, so we gave the district a holiday where we didn't charge ourselves for the month of December, and then any employee that had charges, that we didn't charge them either. So, that saved us about $1 million out of the operating budget. So, our costs for benefits went down for this year, but then they'll go back up next year. And then we will see a decrease in supplies. So, for the preliminary budget, this does not include a salary increase, and we do, we do know that we're gonna be meeting with the NEA, and that will be negotiated, so there will be an additional cost for salary increases built in for the June budget. The preliminary budget, again, shows the true savings prior to any adjustments, so we know that we can do some things, like moving some federally funded programs, federally funded people out of the federal funds and move them over to the operating funds. So, I didn't make any of those adjustments yet, we wanted to see what the true savings were gonna be. Again, this is just a snapshot in time, and it changed as much as today, like every day something changes, and so it changes my budget. By June, I'm hoping that it'll be a little bit more stable, and I'll be able to have better numbers for you. But the good news is that our fund balances are going to, as of right now, they're at 20.24 for next year, which is really great, because we were really low there for a while back in 1213. So, we are excited about that, that we are going to be able to see some savings and do some things with those savings in the future. Does anybody have any questions?
All righty, thank you so much, Laura.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything else to say?
Of course. I just wanna publicly, I know a lot of folks, we have a great team, I just love our team, but I just wanna take this moment to thank Laura publicly, 'cause she, Laura's here, y'all, at night. Sundays, when I'm headed to church, I look over and I see that Volkswagen bug sitting in the parking lot, and she's here working, so I just wanna publicly say, thank you, Laura. I know it's a thankless job, but you do such an amazing work in that thankless job, like you take it serious. And that's, I mean, I say all the time, listen, you can have the best plan, but if you have money to pay for it, all it is is pie in the sky, right? So, you do an awesome job, and I just wanted to say it publicly to you, okay?
So, if there's no further business, meeting is adjourned.